Did you hear that? The town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 13th, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane?
Here. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner O'Donnell in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Prior to a Planning Commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and helpful. At meetings of the Commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item on the agenda. If you wish to address the Commission tonight during verbal communications or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card. They are on the benches behind where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member. Please print your name clearly. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I would ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it, state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, and as requested, you limit your comments to three minutes. Subcommittee reports, in addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on several town committees. Are there any reports this evening? You had an easy two weeks, eh? So I move to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on any issue not on the agenda. Please remember there is a three-minute time limit. Do I have any cards? I do not have any cards. Does anyone wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? So I move to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion, but before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the Commission may request that an item be removed. Tonight, we have one item on consent, and that is approval of the minutes of the May 23rd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull an item, or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I am.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Badami?
So seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Passes seven to one. Seven to nothing. I was listening to baseball before we gave the... I move to the public hearings portion of our agenda and consider item two on tonight's agenda, which is 233 Masol Avenue. This concerns minor residential development in and historic district. Applications, there are two, HS 18018 and HS 18031. We are to consider an appeal of a Historic Preservation Committee decision approving a request for exterior alterations on a non-contributing single-family residence, HS 18018, and an appeal of an Historic Preservation Committee decision approving a request for, in addition to a residential accessory structure, less than 450 square feet, which is visible from the street, this is HS 18031, on property located in the Almond Grove. It's the historic district, and it's zoned R1D LHP, it is APN 51016020. The property owner and applicant is Vladimir Kowinski, and the appellant is Tyler Atkinson. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? Are there any disclosures by any commissions regarding... Vice Chair Hudes?
Serving on the HPC, after consideration of the item was closed at the last meeting, I had a conversation with the architect. Before knowing this matter would come before here, I did not discuss the project. I simply provided some information about process and referred the architect to staff for questions, so I had no consequential conversation.
I appreciate the disclosure. Is there any difficulty with tonight's proceeding for you?
No.
Okay. Any other disclosures? I seek a staff report. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Before you tonight, there's an appeal of an HPC decision approving exterior alterations in an addition to a residence, and an appeal of an HPC decision approving an addition to an accessory structure located at 223 Masol in the Almond Grove Historic District. The subject property is located on the west side of Masol Avenue and is developed with a two-story, single-family residence with an attic and a detached, non-conforming garage. The applicant proposes two projects, one for the residence and one for the garage. Both applications were approved by the Historic Preservation Committee. The proposal for the residence includes exterior modifications and a 99-square-foot addition to the existing residence located in the attic area. The proposal includes a modified roof pitch, changes to window and door locations, and additional massing. The proposal for the detached garage includes a 350-square-foot addition at the east and north elevations. The existing non-conforming garage partially extends over the property line to the south, and the proposed additions would be located on the subject property along the property line. A new exterior stairway and awning would provide access to the residence, and a new deck would be located above the garage. On April 25th, 2018, the HPC approved the applications with conditions requiring minor design revisions. The applicant has incorporated these revisions into the plans before you tonight. An appeal of these decisions was filed on May 7th, 2018, on behalf of the property owners at 216 Glen Ridge Avenue, located directly south of the subject property. The appellant included six points in their reasoning for the appeal, and staff has included a detailed discussion on each point on pages eight through 11 of your staff report. A desk item has been distributed to the Commission, which includes photos of the installed story poles from several locations near the subject property taken by the applicant. Based on the analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends denial of the appeal, upholding the decisions of the Historic Preservation Committee, subject to the recommended conditions of approval included as Exhibit Three. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public portion of the public hearing. The way this works when we have an appeal of the Historic Preservation Committee is that the appellant will have 10 minutes to present, followed by the applicant having 10 minutes to present. Then if any members of the public wish to speak, they will have up to three minutes, followed by the applicant having five minutes, and the appellant concluding remarks also five minutes. Who will be speaking for the appellant?
Good evening. Tyler Atkinson on behalf of the appellant.
Mr. Atkinson, to the mic.
Mr. Jim McManus and Sarah Y. I understand I have 10 minutes to start. I don't anticipate I'm going to need to use all of that time. Now, the applicant is asking for you, as Planning Commissioners, to approve construction on my client's property. On this basis alone, we believe you must deny this application. You cannot approve this application. We respectfully disagree with the staff report on this point. I'm not going to repeat the objections we've made in our various letters. I'm not going to spend time on some of the errors on the face of the report before you, and I'm not going to address the emotional and, frankly, we believe misleading accusations that the appellant has made against my clients. I submit to you that there are two things about this application which should give you great concern. Number one, the applicant is asking you to approve a project which encroaches on my client's property. You need only look at the proposed garage and garage roof, which extends over my client's property. We were told by staff at the HPC meeting that encroachment is a "civil matter." Nothing could be further from the truth, and adopting this view respectfully, we believe, would be advocating your role. Number two, and perhaps most troubling, as far as this application goes, is a pattern of what we believe is deceit on the applicant's part, starting with a failure to do as what was strongly recommended, and that is community outreach. We believe the applicant has falsely claimed that he tried to reach out to his neighbors about this development, and neighbors appeared at the HPC who said they had never heard from him. In addition, the applicant's unapproved balcony, which was only removed after it was brought to the attention of the town. The applicant has accused my clients of delaying his project. If the delay was caused by my clients pointing out the unapproved balcony, so be it. The angry and misleading emails that are now exhibits before you, we believe this blaming of others is for the applicant's own shortcomings. We believe the applicant has been working on his property without a permit. He attempted to shroud what was going on on his property by constructing a fence on another neighbor's lawn. The applicant has made what we believe are evasive responses to the town. The applicant has expressed indifference about the encroachments on my client's property, and the applicant has refused to allow us to inspect the property ourselves to verify the promises about these various things. In conclusion, we request the Commission deny the garage application outright. Further, the Commission should continue this residence application to a date certain with specific direction that the town's building department inspect the project to determine if there's been any unauthorized construction that was not authorized by the foundation permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, I'll call up the applicant. Who will be speaking for the applicant? And I will need a speaker card, please. Kel Supri. Okay. Thank you. State your name and address for the record, and you will have 10 minutes.
I'm Vladimir Kowinski. I currently reside in my house in Menlo Park. While we're building this, I'm obviously not living on the 223 Masol Avenue house. My address in Menlo Park is 20 Sharon Court, Menlo Park, California, 94025. Yes. Thank you. So obviously, thank you for making the time. This has, you know, been a long time coming, I guess. I'm anxious to get this project going and finished. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. To address a couple of points here, we started this project back... We bought the house last June. We've gone through at least four meetings with the historic committee, Preservation Committee, to make sure that we're building a house that conforms to all the neighborhood codes and the building code. Met with Sean and the team many, many times to make sure that the original plan that we had, that we submitted back in February, conforms. As we submitted those plans, Sean let us know that, hey, there's a neighbor that probably isn't... is going to complain, is not happy, he's always inquiring about the property, and I've been... I knocked on all the doors and frankly met most of the neighbors, and I knocked on Jim and Sarah's door many times during the day when I'm there, I'm working on the house. Frankly, nobody was home to answer the door. Nevertheless, I actually instructed Sean to go, hey, can you give whoever it is complaining, give them my number and email, and let them call me, because at that time, Sean couldn't tell me who the complaint or complainer was, you know, whatever the term is. And I said, hey, it doesn't matter, just give them my number, and I'll be happy to talk to them. I've talked to everyone else, everybody's fine. I didn't hear anything, and by chance, I actually saw Sarah. I was there almost all the time, obviously, or I was there, and I saw Sarah on the street, and I was just... I didn't know who she was, I just said hello, hey, I'm building this house, this is my house, nice to meet you, kind of thing. She was walking out of the house that's next door to our neighbor. I guess they bought the house on Masol, so nobody builds in front of them either. But she was walking out of that house. I thought she lived there. In any case, she's like, hey, I guess you know that we're the ones complaining. And I said, no, I didn't know, but it's good to meet you. Let's, you know, let's work it out. What's the complaint, et cetera, et cetera? And she said, well, it's height, it's privacy, it's windows, it's this and that and the other. And I said, well, you know, tell me what you want, I'll reduce the massing, I'll get rid of the windows, I'll make it smaller, just tell me what, you know, it is what you want us to do. And at the time, it was us standing on the patio, she's all, well, I don't think that will be enough. So at that point, it was, okay, and let's just... And Jim came home and is sort of, you know... So we left. Nevertheless, I, you know, I received the complaint. I didn't receive anything after that. I said, hey, oh, during that conversation, they said they were leaving for six weeks to go, and they're going away, and they're, you know, unfortunately can't help and can't work on the property. And I sent them an email right away, or at least tried to encourage them to talk to me before they left, because otherwise it would delay my project even more. Regardless, I didn't hear back. I've submitted, in essence, I've asked my architect since then to revise the plans at least three or four times in order to comply and get them to respond. Hey, does this work? I removed the windows, I reduced the massing, I lowered the building, and I have not heard and/or had any communication with Jim or Sarah since that day. I've only had emails either from Tyler and... I forgot your name, sorry about that. In any case, we did everything that we thought we could, because we took their complaint, hey, you know, this is privacy, this is your life, you know, I'll do whatever I can, I want to be good neighbors. I reduced my square footage in the house, I reduced the original plans, because we had a, you know, we have two kids, we have a six and a 10. I did everything I thought was the right thing to do to make the neighbors happy. We did all that, and nevertheless, they complained, and the complaints are sent on the last possible day of every appeal period without any communication in between. As demonstrated frankly on this last appeal, and the appeal was made after all the approvals, it was made based on technicalities and process, and none of those complaints are actually about my house, about the design, about the privacy, or none of those. It's either notice or drawings or what, and none of them were required. And in fact, the... One of the first things that are on that list was that we didn't put any story poles up around the second sort of approved plan that the HPC had provided. And I actually, the day after the HPC meeting, actually, no, sorry, the week before the HPC meeting, I put them up without having been told to do so, and even sent a note to Jim and Sarah, saying, hey, I put these up, let me know if this works, I'd love to go into the HPC meeting with you, at least knowing what it is and approving that design. I didn't hear back, obviously, and then we had the HPC meeting, the drawings were approved. I didn't hear anything back, and they appealed anyway, but based on... They gave the reasons based on, it's either I didn't give them enough information, or I didn't have anything, or they didn't have enough notice. So the first complaint that we received was that I didn't go around and tell all the neighbors as recommended by the city, and in fact, I did, and in fact, I encouraged them to reach out to me. Nobody else complained, frankly. So there was no other reason to legislate, go wide... Create a wider circle or create a wider net. But I did, you know, do everything that I think I didn't, were supposed to do, and in fact, I created, you know, I took pictures of the story poles, of the latest story poles, these are the ones that were approved, just to make sure that you understand that I'm thoughtful of, from every angle, that you can barely see my house from, literally from behind us. This is our house, and this, I zoomed in so people can actually see the net, and this is the McManus's house, by the way, and this is my house, and this is the net... This is the McManus's house, which stands about 30 feet taller than my house as finished, at will be finished. So I just want to demonstrate if there are any issues on me imposing on the neighborhood and not being thoughtful of the neighborhood, I want to be very clear that I've listened to every guidance, every suggestion, every direction from the city, from the building department and the HPC to do this. And if you can tell, my house is actually about two feet shorter than my neighbor's house, that is actually based about 10 feet lower than my house. So altogether, because it looks like a two-story house, but it's actually on a slope, so the first floor is actually a cellar, right? And so if you look down the back, from the back, whoops, this is... You can't really see because it's dug down, but that's really what was originally the first floor. And I'm just trying to make livable space in the attic, because we have room and it's legal and zoned, and we did everything to the building codes that allows us to do so. Anyhow, obviously, I'm nervous and I don't do this, but I think we've addressed, and I've met all the neighbors, all of everybody around us, obviously, thanks for coming. That's all I have to say. I mean, I think Sean put together a pretty comprehensive report. I don't think I need to say much more than that, what's in that report, but I'm very anxious to get the project started. We delayed taking our kids to Los Gatos School District by a year already, because we figured this isn't going to happen. So my wife isn't here, because she starts crying every time we're here, or we met with the HPC the last couple of times. So it's been a very stressful process, and, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if there's an appeal to whatever happens today. There'll be an appeal, it'll be posted on the last day possible, and then who knows what will happen. And you saw my sort of opening paragraph to the response. I truly hope that there's something that can be done to prevent other families going through this, because I think it was only done because they could, right? Because everything they're doing is sort of within their legal grounds, and they're exploiting every opportunity to delay us, because they can't, not because of anything that we were doing. Anyhow, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowinski. Let's see if there's any questions. Any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you very much. Do we have any cards from members of the public? Seeing none, Mr. Kowinski, you have five minutes to rebut anything you heard. There may be questions from the Commission, are there?
Do you have a question?
I have one.
Yes.
The folks at home can't hear you unless you use that microphone.
Fair enough. To everybody that's watching, hi.
And your architect may need to assist on this. So I'm interested in your letter of... It was received by the town on March 16th, 2018, and it is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 changes that you made to the design, and Ms. Payne, we may need you for this. Because my question is, of these 11 changes that you elected to make, how many were required where you were out of the code and had to do...
None. We did it only to appease the neighbor.
You chose to do these?
We chose to do those.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Atkinson, as the appellant, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. We heard the applicant talk about that he was anxious to get this project finished, and we also heard some accusations about delay on my client's part, and it sounded like on my part as well. This gentleman bought a house in a historic district that was more than 100 years old with all of the problems that that entails, and I believe the record shows that he tried to jam through these various changes, and in the narrative story of my client ignored him, that's simply not the case, and I think the record also reflects that. And the idea that we wait till the last day to assert our rights, frankly, I don't even know how to respond to that. It's our right to look at these things seriously. We're talking about a house that will be there for the future, and it's very important to my client, obviously. But aside from that, these appeals to a motion should not govern your decision. What were called technicalities by the applicant, this is the law. Building on another person's property, you can't do that. Putting a roof that extends into the airspace above a person's property, you can't do that, and a commission cannot give a blessing to such behavior. The applicant said that nobody else complained. Well, the HPC members on... Of this body can recall that at least two neighbors, including Mr. Carlquist, appeared and did voice complaints. So this isn't a situation where there are just two neighbors who've made a problem I have no further comments. Thank you.
Let's see if there's any questions from the Commission, Mr. Atkinson, just in case. Questions for the speaker? I have a couple. I want to make sure I got something right. Earlier, you mentioned, or it was mentioned, that the McManus's house was 30 feet higher than the subject house?
Well, I don't actually know if that's true or not, and ultimately, to answer these types of questions, I think we need to be able to look at the property, and if we're not going to be allowed to, and if that's not something that we have a right to do, and I understand that's not a right that we have, then the town needs to do that. So I cannot answer that question standing here. I would submit to you, however, that ultimately, that does not condone the approval of this So that's our position.
It just... I found it remarkable, because I visited the site, I walked the property, I didn't see that, and I also didn't see... Maybe your staff can help me. Or maybe it hadn't been constructed yet. A roof that extends over into the appellant's property?
Staff will answer questions after you're done asking questions of the appellant.
So it's your position that there's a roof that comes over into your client's property?
Well, first of all, the garage currently encroaches onto my client's property, and that is...
I'm aware of that, and I think in one of your letters, it was said that it's been that way for 50 or 100 years. I'm concerned about a new roof going... that way for fifty or a hundred years. I'm concerned about a new roof going over into your client's property.
So, so, according to the plans, as I read them, the roof that is anticipated on that garage, which has been on my client's property, that roof, that would be new construction over our property, over my client's property, and that roof would extend over my client's property. That roof did not exist fifty years ago. That's a new roof.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing no questions, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and ask if any commissioners have questions of staff, wish to comment on the appeal, or wish to make a motion. Commissioner Badami.
I have two questions for staff. First one, per the appellant's testimony, is there an encroachment on the appellant's property with a roof extension, and if so, is it a civil matter?
I can answer the first question. There is an existing condition of a, of a garage crossing over the property boundary. The proposed addition, I can call your attention to Exhibit seventeen, and specifically Sheets A. three point O and A. three point one. The lower drawing on those pages marked east elevation. On A. three point zero, what you're looking at is, are the existing conditions. The property line is a lightly dashed line in between, just to the right of the, the number one that is circled. So, that's the property line showing the existing conditions of the gable-ended structure crossing, crossing over onto the neighboring property. When you look at Sheet A. three point one, that property line is just to the right of the line labeled two with a circle around it. And the roof continues to encroach, the building continues to encroach. The addition, which is in the foreground of that elevation drawing, is built right up to the property line, including the new roof and the trim detail around the roof section of, of that building. As far as it being a civil matter, I'll defer that to the town attorney.
So, yes, we consider it a civil matter in that there could be, there may, may, may or may not be prescriptive rights or that, from either party, so we don't usually get involved in that. But if you do have concerns, I think you, you could easily put in a condition that says there will be no new construction that crosses over the property lines to do that, to make certain that that's not happening. But I think what Sean just said is, is there's no new construction, and that was my understanding, there's no new construction extending onto the adjacent property. It all is occurring on the property. But there certainly is a, currently, an encroachment, but we don't get involved in determining whether they have rights or do not have rights. That's a civil matter.
Commissioner Badami, may I hitchhike? What you just said, to keep it simple for me, as I look at the drawings, I don't see any change.
There would be no increase in the nonconformity, and, and without scaling these and asking the, the designer for more details, it looks like the roof encroachment, just the roof, is being cut back a bit.
That's what I'm seeing. And was I correct when I said there's something in the package we received that said it's been like this for fifty or a hundred years?
That's what we believe to be the case.
All right, thank you. I, I cut you off, Commissioner. I'm sorry. Commissioner Badami.
All right, on to my second question. Exhibit nine contains a letter from the applicant, and it questions the legal basis for the appeal. Is there a legal basis for overturning the decision of the Historic Preservation Committee?
So, there's, there's nothing in my review of their letter. Normally, when we receive letters, as you've seen, when there's an appellant done, they cite either your general plan policies that are you're in violation of, your, your residential guidelines, your zoning code that go in where you disagree or agreed with the underlying body. In this case, there's, there's no sites to any of our zoning codes that are in violation, our general plan. All processes were filed correctly. We, we consider the encroachment a private matter. And so, from a legal standpoint, no, I don't believe there's any legal basis for the, for denying it, but you heard your testimony, and if you feel that additional conditions, or there's a reason why it needs to be granted, the appeal, then we can certainly work with the commission to find those findings.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you had your hand up earlier.
I think the questions have almost been completely answered, but I, just to be clear on this, when I'm looking at the drawings that we, we've referenced, it had been my understanding, and as you know, I, I'm on the HPC committee, so I've heard virtually all of this before, and it's helpful, they're twice in my case. I knew that there was, apparently, an encroachment, which had existed for a long time. The allegation today, however, and I think at the HPC, was that the new construction would further aggravate, or would further encroach upon the property. Now, when you look at the, the plans, you can't really tell that. It does look like it doesn't. It does look like it may be less. So, unless somebody went out there and surveyed it, at least I don't know, and maybe I could turn this into a question, by looking at the drawings, and assuming the drawings to be correct, which I, is another issue, is your reading of the drawings that there is no additional encroachment as a result of the improvement?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have, I have a question for you, Commissioner, you, because you just brought up, we have two members of the commission who have been on the historic, and I'm assuming that the note says this started in December of last year, and there were four meetings. I'm going to go out on a limb and, and sound stupid, but what's being asked for that, that hasn't been given? Assuming you're closer to this than I am.
Well, without, I, I don't, I think I would just as soon stay away from saying what they're asking for. I think I understand what they're asking, but to go on the record and give you my opinion of what they're asking for would be unnecessary and might not be a good answer. So, I don't want to do that.
That's legitimate. Commissioner Hootis, do you have a comment?
No, I really don't. I, I'm considering this as a, a new, as an item that's before the planning commission on appeal, and I don't have anything that I would remark on in that regard.
Then I'll turn to staff. What are they asking for that hasn't been given? And lot, it seems to me, that letter I referenced earlier, a lot's been given that wasn't asked for. Why are we here?
I think the simple answer to why we're here is that somebody filed the timely appeal, and the appeal needs to go through its process and be heard.
What do you see as the basis of the appeal?
The six points in the staff report-
Right, I read them, and then I read your responses.
They're, they're relative to process, they're relative to behavior or actions of the applicant and the owner. They're relative to the building process that's ongoing for the foundation replacement.
To the town attorney, is, is any of that, is that purview?
As I said, I think their primary concern tonight was the fact that there's an encroachment, and want the project denied completely, not that they're, they're asking for any changes, they want the project denied completely because of the fact that that encroachment exists.
Other question. Commissioner O'Donnell?
There are a number of legal issues raised by the appellant, such as notice and various other things like that. The staff has responded to those, and I, for one, would adopt the staff's response. But those are indeed different than a potential encroachment of the new improvement. So, in deciding this matter, we must not only decide the facts, but there are legal issues that are raised, and we have a staff report that deals with those legal issues. If, if any of us disagree with the staff on that, we should say so. I happen to agree with it. That's-
Commissioner Hootis, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for staff about process. What are the requirements for community outreach, neighbor outreach, and notification for a minor residential development that comes before the HPC?
So, I just want to, if I may clarify the question, are you speaking about the application process for a minor residential development, or a minor historic project in a historic district?
No, minor residential development in a historic district.
Thank you. I, I just want to be sure to answer the question that you asked. The noticing requirement is the neighbors that are sharing a property line, and the, and any occupants, so it's the owners and the occupants sharing a property line, and then those properties across the street.
And I think your question was public outreach. So, we always recommend that they do public outreach, that there is no absolute requirement that public outreach be done.
Okay. And with regard to the notice, was that notice followed for the matter before the HPC?
Yes, the original project followed the notice. A notice of pending approval per town code was sent out.
Okay. I have another question about the story polls. What, what's the requirement for story polls for that type of application that comes before the HPC?
For the minor residential development, the original application, story polls are required for additions to second stories or upper floors. They were installed and certified.
Before the planning commission, or before the HPC?
Before the HPC, because a minor residential development doesn't, is not heard by the planning commission. Rather, if the director intends to approve the project, we send out a notice of pending approval to those neighbors that we just referenced, and then there's a ten-day, what is termed objection period, and if we receive an objection, then we try to work with the parties to work it out, and if it can't get worked out, then it goes to the planning commission. It never got to that point.
Right. And were the story polls installed properly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was, I was only the impression that when they were put up, they didn't have to be put up for some reason. They chose to put them up.
So, after the minor, the original project, there were, the applicant chose to file two applications, which are the ones that you're hearing tonight. Those are minor historic projects. Those do not require story polls, and they do not require neighbor noticing.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hanson.
I had two quick questions. One, there was a statement made by the appellant about other neighbors being present at the April, the Historic Preservation Committee, and we, I don't think we saw the minutes. I was just curious as to what comments, do you recall what comments they had? And, and then, was there any additional comments by any of those neighbors after the decision was made?
The reference neighbor up on Glen Ridge, I believe his last name is Carlquist, attended the meeting. I don't recall the specifics of his questions. He did ask about the location of his property along the property boundary of, of the applicant, because there's a little sliver along the, I think it's the east side of Glen Ridge. There's a little five-foot sliver of all those properties that are owned by the folks on the west side of Glen Ridge. So, he asked about, I think he mentioned some trees on that strip of property, and mentioned some fencing on that strip of property. I don't recall him following up beyond that.
So, there wasn't any specific complaint about the actual development proposed by the applicant?
He may, I don't want to speak out of turn. I, I don't fully recall. He may have discussed height from his perspective on Glen Ridge, but I don't recall the specifics.
But there was no additional follow-up after that?
No, no written, written comment that I'm aware of.
And then, a related question I had to that was, it was about the availability of plans, because there's, you know, outreach and, and showing people's plans, but my understanding is that when applicants will put plans, they're available, and they, while it's in the review process, it's, it's available to the public. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. It's, they're posted on the town's pending projects webpage, which is available on the front page of our website, as well as staff makes time for anyone who wants to come in and view the plans, and answer questions, and walk them through the plans if they, if they're not familiar with how to read plans.
So, there really isn't any reason that someone who had an interest in, was concerned about what was being developed, could not do that by looking at the plans and talking with staff?
I think we try to make sure that the plans are available to any interested parties.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch.
A bit of a comment, and then a question for Mr. Schultz. In reviewing all the documentation that we've been provided, as Mr. O'Donnell stated, it does feel like the majority of these items are more procedural, the policy-based. And I do agree with staff that based on what I am reading in all of this, that the policies, guidelines, and procedures that have been set in place by the town council and staff have been followed. So, then my second comment would be concerning the easement, and would like to make sure my understanding of this is clear. There is no new, we've already clarified this, I don't even, it's not expanding or anything. This is basically a roof replacement, which would be mostly considered, I would think, a maintenance issue. Roofs need to be replaced. So, that being said, I want to be very clear how we would move forward, and how this gets framed, you know, if we agree or disagree with staff, and then is this going to be, do you want us to go through all these points that are written in here, make our statement, or is this just a one motion, one, one point as far as the town is concerned?
Yeah, no, it's just a, a one motion. The motion is found on page eleven. And no, you do not have to go through point by point. I think Commissioner O'Donnell has already put into the record that he's reviewed the detailed description from page eight to eleven that staff has provided as to each and every one of those procedural issues that the town has followed.
And then, if, if, as the town attorney mentioned before, if you want to add an additional level of clarification, you could add an additional condition that the addition to the garage cannot cross over the property line.
The existing garage that's out there?
The addition that they're proposing.
The addition, sorry, I didn't hear that part. Were you going to ask a question, Mr. O'Donnell?
No, I'm just going to make a motion.
Oh, so was I. If everyone's comfortable, I'm going to go ahead and, and make a, a motion. I am going to deny the appeal, or I make a motion to deny the appeal, upholding the decision of the HPC. I find the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section fifteen, three oh one, new existing facilities, Exhibit two, and Section fifteen, three, three one, historic resource restoration rehabilitation. I find that the project complies with the residential design guidelines, Exhibit two, and I make the required considerations as required in Section two, twenty-nine, point eight zero, point two nine zero of the town code for granting an approval of a minor development in a historic application, also in Exhibit two, and approve the minor development in a historic district application, HS dash one eight, dash zero one eight, and HS dash one eight, dash zero three one, with the conditions contained in Exhibit three, and development plans attached as Exhibit sixteen and seventeen. And I would also like to add the condition that there is no further increase in the size of the roof over the garage that encroaches on the neighborhood property, neighbor's property.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Badami?
So moved.
Do we have this, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to ask a question on the addition to the motion. We have drawings which I think purport to show that the new construction will not further encroach. So, the motion says it shall not encroach, and I guess I'm thinking about, why do you do that? You could do a survey. I'm not sure we want the applicant to have to do a survey at this point. That's why the civil matter comes up. If it would be the appellant's position, notwithstanding that the drawings, which do not show that, they believe, for some reason, that it does, then they could produce a survey or some other credible evidence. But the way it is phrased now, if I were the applicant, I don't know what I would do with that. And secondly, it seems to me, it opens it up to further argument about, one, what they should do, and did they do it, and the other things, which I personally would suggest we not do.
I would say to the maker of the motion, what I just heard is, would you be interested in revising your motion to the four, four points that were given us, and in deference to Counselor O'Donnell, we let the, we let the extra piece go. I want to hear from the maker of the motion.
Yes, I, I do agree with that, and I will remove that part of my motion.
To the secondor?
I agree as well.
All right, Commissioner Hootis.
Yeah, in that case, I would be prepared to support the motion. I was concerned about adding conditions for which there's no evidence in the drawings or in the documents, so I would be comfortable at this point in supporting the motion.
Other comments? I have a comment, and it's just going to get me in trouble. I spent the weekend going over this with a fine-tooth comb, and, you know, we're, we're not a ter- not attorneys, well, one of us is, but we live in a narrow corridor of rules and regulations on what we're supposed to do, and I couldn't find any merit to any of this, and it's been going on since December. And if, that just is kind of outrageous, and that's, that's about as much hot water as I'm gonna get myself in. I will support the motion. Any other comments? Then I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you. We move on to other business. Are there any commission matters that anyone wishes to voice? Scheduling, anything? I have one. Can we, can we discuss the meeting of the, what, the 27th?
We will.
We will, as opposed to now? We will discuss that. And I'll move on to the report from the Director of Community Development. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for the commission?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Last week, the council considered 221 Almondra, the zone change, and then they introduced that ordinance, and that will go back for a second reading next week. They also adopted a resolution to suspend formula retail requirements for conditional use permits for up to 18 months, or if five come through our offices for approval, then we will revisit that with council before that 18 months. And then they also considered the North Forty. After some deliberations and a conceptual site layout that was shown at that meeting, they have continued the item till, until August 7th, I believe, and then staff will be working on some additional information to try to help them come to conclusion on the specific plan amendment process. And in relation to the June 27th meeting, the applicant will not be ready, and that is the only item on the agenda, but rather than bring all of you back to continue that to a date certain, we are going to renotice that, so the meeting for the 27th will be canceled.
Otherwise, four of us, we're gonna have to come back just to have a, and I'll tell them, I know you'd lead the way on that. Regarding the formula retail, that's a suspension for 18 months and that'll be reevaluated?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Town Attorney?
Just wanted to thank you for those that attended the workshop too, or the study session on the housing laws that are, that have been passed and that are currently pending. We really appreciated you in listening to that. If you weren't there, please review it, the video. I think it was very helpful and shows that we have a lot of work to go through, and that is on council's agenda to decide how we move forward with those new bills. And that's on the agenda next Tuesday. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Commissioner O'Donnell.
This may not be the proper forum, but reading the newspaper, which indicated that the ownership of the approved part of the North Forty has now shifted to one of the parties, and accepting that to be true, I can't imagine why it wouldn't be, is further my understanding that what the council is doing is on the balance of the property, and that is still owned by the owners, we don't know subject to what kind of condition. But something else in the paper was talking about Grovner somehow being involved in that. I'm just curious, does anybody know whether Grovner nowadays, apparently has sold its interest in the first 20 acres? Whether there's some retention of an interest in the balance?
Staff understands there is some retention of interest in the balance. Whether or not that will remain throughout whatever process we go through is unknown, but currently they do still have an interest there.
Thank you.
Any other matters? In that case, this mission, this meeting is adjourned.